Good to go when everybody is back in position.
Back in position.
Getting an echo, Jeff.
Getting an echo, Jeff.
Okay.
Okay.
I do want to announce that.
I do want to announce it.
If you were watching through YouTube, the link was disconnected and you need to go back and reconnect with the link. And it'll get you back on, okay? So we'll bring this session of the Board of Supervisors, the March 14th meeting, back to order. And at this time, we will go into our consent agenda. And these items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. These are either renewal contracts, amendments, or items that have been previously come before the Board. The Board of Supervisors will act upon them at one time without discussion. Any Board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may now raise their concerns to the Board members. Supervisor will take these concerns under consideration to decide if there's adequate reason to remove the item from consent. If the item is pulled by a Board member, the concerns and questions asked by members of the public will be addressed. No further public comment regarding the item will be received. With that, members of the Board, any items? Hardy? None?
No, no items to be pulled for me from the consent calendar.
Very good. Madam Clerk, staff? None. Members of the public, any item you wish to see pulled? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
Motion Supervisor Hall, seconded Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, thank you. District four.
District four, yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
And district two?
Yes. Thank you. All right, we can go. We've got a couple of community presentations here. And the first presentation we have is a resolution proclaiming the month of March 2023 as Youth Art Month in Nevada County. This is one of my favorite times. And with that, I'm introducing Scott Lay, Nevada County Superintendent of Schools. Welcome, Scott.
Great. Good morning. Thank you Chair Schofield, members of the Board of Supervisors and staff. Very happy to be here and talking about something other than snow and school closures. So that's a, that's a good thing. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to this presentation as well as the resolution that will follow. This is an exciting, exciting month for us in art. It is Young Art Month, which will be displayed here at the Root Center, which is one of our favorite things to do. It's, I know, one of the favorite things of our teachers and our students and their parents and grandparents to come and see all the art that will be up on the walls here. So with that, I have a short presentation just to kind of give you an update of where the arts are in our schools in Nevada County. As I've been here before and talked to you, in the last 10 years, arts are taking a greater emphasis in our classrooms in California and here in Nevada County. As we all know, Nevada County has such a rich tradition of art in the Grass Valley, Nevada City area, as well as Truckee. So it's just a natural fit for us. We have a lot of community members that are very artistic, support the arts. And with that, we want to make sure that it's a very vibrant part of our curriculum here in the school. Couple of big items that came across from Sacramento that helped us out in the schools was just recently, Prop 28 was passed, which funds about 1% of the state's general fund, or around $941 million. That will be dedicated just to arts in the schools. It cannot be moved into any other area. So that's an exciting addition for schools. We also had the 2022 Budget Act discretionary grant. Now, that has been proposed to be cut by the governor. But right now, there, I can tell you, there are no programs here in Nevada County that will suffer because of a potential cut. Everything is done and nothing is being pulled out. So that's exciting. With that, we have a strategic arts plan here in our Nevada County schools. We just don't do it willy-nilly. It's very purposeful. There are four main documents and then one local one. The first one up you can see is the California Preschool Learning Foundation. So yes, we do start art in preschool. And I think any of us that have young children or grandchildren, you've probably got a fridge full of art. And there actually is a plan and some really great stuff. You have the 2019 California Arts Standards, the 2020 Arts Framework, all about the California Career Technical Education Model Curriculum. And then the one I think that educators here in Nevada County and artists are most proud of is our Strategic Art Plan. And we created one here at my county office. We had input from all our staff. We had input from students and community members. And it's a roadmap using the previous four items to move us through into the future. So that's very exciting because it's ours. In here, we've got some pictures of what's going on in classrooms. With that, we know that arts is just so important in all areas of life. It creates lifelong skills. It enhances problem-solving, critical thinking skills, creates a fun and creative atmosphere. Very rarely do you go see an art lesson where everybody's got sad faces on. And the kids are usually really happy. The staff's happy doing it. It helps, we know, prepare students for college and the workforce by giving them necessary schools of innovation and creativity. And employers, when you ask them what the number one thing is they want, creativity is huge. Look, think outside the box. With that, we also use arts to study cultures. When I was a teacher, that was my favorite way to explain different cultures around the world was through the art, through the music, through the paintings, the storytelling. And so that is something that goes on in all our classrooms here in Nevada County. We do classical music lessons in our schools. It's a great way to usually come back from a recess when you've had a very heated game of four-square or wall ball and kind of settles the kids back down. And it's great. They learn about that, probably something they may not learn at home. But they learn about the composers, the story behind the music. And we also have different genres of music that we play as well. So they experience a wide variety of music. School and community benefits. You can see here from the different slides, we've got a play that's going on, different arts. Comprehensive arts curriculum nurtures a collaborative school culture, builds a sense of community, which I've mentioned, we have such a strong sense of arts in our communities here. And it creates ties to surrounding communities and cultures of the world. With that, in the past, I always bring this up because I'm hoping it doesn't happen again. But we've had to make cuts. When there are cuts that come from Sacramento, one of the things that usually goes first, as we know, are the extracurricular activities, or arts, or sports. And with the exciting addition of Prop 28, that will not happen to arts. So that's something very positive moving forward to. Right now, our schools are in no danger of any budget cuts that are happening. They are very solvent. They're doing a great job keeping track of taxpayer dollars so we keep everything in our curriculum moving along. This is the STEAM Expo, and I'm sad to say that we are not holding the STEAM Expo this year. This was our showcase for science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Unfortunately, participation was very low. I think the recent storms did not help the final push of schools to get the art in, as well as all the other projects. So we had to make the very tough decision of canceling it. But what we'll be doing for my office is we're going out to each one of the schools where we had students participate. And we will have a big ceremony there and coordinate with each of the school sites. So the kids will get recognized, understand how important it is, and thank them for their work. Community partnerships are so big in our county. With that, with just several examples up here, you've got Music in the Mountains in Concert Sierra, which I will mention, even though their new facility, I think, three days after they signed the papers, had a partial roof collapse. They have a concert Monday, and they're still able to put that on. And that's one of the exciting things. We're bringing third graders from across the county to the Seventh Day Adventist Church where they're holding it right now. And we'll get to watch that. We have the Center for the Arts, an amazing venue, the Young Art Exhibit here. We have art docent programs. We have Nevada County Reeds. We've got Sierra College, which we have strong ties to. So a lot going on here in the community. One thing we started last year, which we plan to continue, was the Latino Family Festival, which was tied into arts. If you did not have the opportunity to see that or experience it, I highly recommend, when you see the flowers coming out in early fall, to attend that. It was a wonderful showcase of the arts and celebrating Hispanic culture. Here's a picture of our Music in the Mountains link-up recorder. We do this with the students where they play their recorders, not quite as well as the people at Carnegie Hall, but they're pretty darn close. And it's a lot of fun to go and watch that. This is a in concert, as I mentioned, Concert Sierra, county-wide, third-grade music concert. This was from last year. And as I mentioned, it will be on the 17th this year. And some pictures from our Young at Art exhibit. The Nevada County Reed selection, Interior Chinatown, which we help support, is due to a lot of organizations here in the county. Some of the works from our art docent programs that we have in our schools. And with that, I just want to thank you, Board of Supervisors, for supporting this, for allowing us to put the art up in the wall here, for allowing this presentation today, and for considering the resolution that will come before you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Scott. Greatly appreciated. Hardy, do you want to start off with comments, questions?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Scott, thank you so much for making the presentation today. And it's always a good time to see the modifications to the Root Center that allow all the art to be hung up. And I saw that happening last week. And so it's exciting to think about a new round of art that's being placed up there that we can see and be part of. I, you know, I was really impressed by your roadmap. I think that's, it's probably uncommon, I think, for people to formulate a plan that's detailed and in-depth for art. And I just commend you in doing that and taking the time to do that because there's so many other pressures on test scores and all the things that the educational community have kind of struggled with as we come out of COVID. So I just really want to say thank you for your kind of forward thought and being on the edge of that and getting that accomplished. And I'm glad that we have the stakeholders and the community members all circled around art. I mean, we have Pulitzer Prize-winning authors and musicians and poets and people doing all different types of art. So I think it's pretty cool that we are in this community and can integrate all of those people into your program. And I'm also really, really thankful for the budget and that the state has allocated money that can't be stripped out so we can continue to offer those types of classes. And I know that, having been involved with a lot of STEAM fairs and trying to put all those together to make special kind of enhancements and bolster all the things that aren't going on with art, I'm glad to see that it's integrated into the classroom. So job well done there. I just wanted to talk just one second about getting up on my soapbox with the mental health and some of the challenges that our community's faced coming out of COVID. And you have these mental health challenges and kids really challenged to express themselves and also a sense of inclusion and belonging. And art kind of hits those three boxes for me. So it allows somebody to express themselves. It equals a playing field among all kind of people and among humanity to share art and music as a way to communicate. And it really, I think, is changing and repealing some of the stress that everybody's been under after COVID. And so job well done. I think it does a lot of things for our community, as well as looking at cool art on the walls. I think it really solves some problems we're all struggling with after the COVID pandemic and some of the challenges we're facing now with snow and extreme weather events, too. So thanks so much for coming in today. And I sure appreciate hearing from you.
Thanks, Hardy. And I couldn't agree with you more. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Hardy. Hardy?
Thanks, Scott, so much for this program. I too am just really grateful that you now have, that we all now have a steady funding stream for art. It's critical to keeping a program going steadily, year by year. And congratulations to you for keeping art programs alive all these years and then turning this into, you know, having the plans to move forward. I think we all love this time of year when we can walk down the halls and see the art. And I'm always, I never think I'm going to be surprised, but I always am, by some of the creativity and topics that get shown. So it's a great way to keep people's brains active in a totally different way than we do with everyday school and work. I have one question. The presentation talks about listening to music, but it doesn't talk too much about creating music. And I'm wondering, does this funding also apply to teaching instruments? For kids learning instruments, maybe putting together school bands? I know I played an instrument all throughout school, and it was key to my, you know, peer group and to understanding and appreciating music and all those other things that playing an instrument actually brings to you. So is this, does this funding and does this program include teaching instrumental music?
It does. It goes across every medium of arts, even digital media. But yes, it'll keep the bands funded in all our schools. We even have little bands in some of our tiniest schools.
That's so great.
Yeah, and music lessons. So absolutely, it goes across all areas.
That's great to hear. Thank you. That's wonderful. And thank you for the presentation. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Hardy. Sue?
Yeah, I always enjoy this time of year kind of just to recoup and listen again what's all going on. We do have that wonderful opportunity that we get to have our halls decorated. And like last month, it was fun to see incorporating physical space. And the kids all did such a great job on that. I really enjoyed reading them and how they prepared, like where they lived and how they did that. I thought that was really interesting. But I think what's most for me, too, is over time, it's fun. I still have things for the kids made when they were little, right? And where they advanced to by high school. And that's been really fun. I still have a piece of pottery that I used from a pottery class from the kids, you know? And all those things, they look at that and they remember it. And some of them have gone on to be really talented. I met a young man the other day that built a quilt. And I was so impressed. It looked as good as something my grandma had made. Really impressed, you know? And he just was so proud of that. And so I love the diversity, culture, like you talked about that. We can learn so much from that. I really love to go see that in the fall. I'm going to make sure I watch for that on the calendar. So thanks for still promoting that. And like I said, in the little schools, and you know, I got to participate at Clear Creek with all those activities. And the arts in that also allows kids to learn how to get up in front of people and be able to speak, like with our Christmas programs, because that's really a part of an art, too, right? So I appreciate the teachers that stay behind that. So thank you so much. Really, this is a great opportunity to celebrate the arts.
Thanks, Sue.
You, Sue. Lisa?
Thank you. So I also want to thank you for all the work that you are doing to promote arts in the schools. It's, you know, was a tragedy years ago when the state cut out all the funding for art programs and hearing all the stories from my friends who, kids were in, especially in high school, who missed out on those opportunities. So really pleased to see that it's back. I also want to thank you for the collaborative effort that you've put into this, working with the various arts organizations, the Arts Council and the Center for the Arts. And I think just as an example of how this works, a couple of weeks ago during this snowstorm, unfortunately, the Center for the Arts had scheduled the Meeting Mozart Program. And school was canceled because of the bad weather. And so I got a call the day before. The musicians were already in the community. They're traveling here from Australia. And so the executive director from the center called me and said, hey, we want to throw this out to the community. What do you think? She was fearful about the impression for people of like, should we go out in the snow? And so I said, you know, I think it'll be okay. People will judge for themselves whether they want to go out or not. And so they threw it out to the community within 24 hours. It was everywhere on social media with the help of the schools. And we thought maybe we would get 100 people there. 500 people showed up for a free concert, Meeting Mozart Kids. And I don't think we would have gotten that response in the community if we hadn't been working with the schools to promote the arts in the community. So really appreciative of that. The performance was fantastic. They ended up actually having to turn a few people away because they had so many people show up. But just the collaboration and what we can do in this community when we all work together. But I really believe that the schools are an integral part of the start of that, of getting kids interested in music and in painting and, you know, being in the band. When we were growing up in public school, that's, you know, you either played sports or you were in the band or you were kind of a nerd and just studied all the time at the library. So I don't think I was any of those. But very appreciative of the work that you guys are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. And it's kind of been said, Scott. I think the point that Hardy made was something that made me think about in the mental health of our youth and how important art can be for these programs, to these young kids. So that's great. And of course, I'm so glad you didn't cancel the exhibit that we have on those halls up there.
Couldn't do that.
Those walls are really hard to push into. I know those gals that have to do that or guys. It's not easy. But I just really enjoy walking down that hall. I did it this morning. And it just seems like every time we walk down that hall, you see something different. I mean, there's just some really beautiful, quality work up there, all ages. So it's greatly appreciated.
Thanks. And I'll be back at 4 o'clock. Scoop an ice cream for anybody who would like to come down.
Oh.
That's the official opening of the event for the community.
I think we have a brief meeting here at 4 o'clock. Maybe we can make that.
Down here in the lobby.
Scott, I'm going to read the resolution. And then we'll have you come forward and we'll do a photo op here. So this is Resolution 23-119, Board of Supervisors of the County of Nevada, Resolution Proclaiming the Month of March 2023 as Youth Art Month in Nevada County. Whereas State and National Youth Art Month began in 1961 and is celebrated nationwide during the month of March. And whereas Nevada County's Young at Art Annual Children's Exhibit reinforces the national program to value art education for all children and to encourage support for quality school art programs. And whereas, throughout the United States, governors and mayors, United States senators, members of Congress, state legislators and other elected officials take the opportunity to publicly state and proclaim the long-term benefits of art education. And whereas Nevada County's Young at Art Exhibit is so well-loved that it remains on the exhibit at the Eric Root Administration Center, March 14th through May 25th, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, Nevada County hereby proclaims the month, March 2023, as Youth Art Month in Nevada County. And of course, we're going to have to vote on that. And one other thing. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
So we have no public comment online or written.
Is there any public comment on this in the chambers? Very good. We'll close the public comments, and I will entertain a motion.
Oh, so moved, District four. Second.
Motion Supervisor Hook, seconded Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. District four.
District four, yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
District five, yes.
And district two?
District two, yes. Thank you. And Scott will have a photo op, if you don't mind. Okay, with that, our next presentation is a Resolution Proclaiming March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in Nevada County. Turn this over to Craig and Paul.
Good morning, Chair Schofield, members of the board. Craig Griesbach, Director of Emergency Services for Nevada County. As your board knows, it is vital that we have strong partners in order for us to provide the highest quality of service to our community. Strong partnerships are even more important when responding to disasters and emergencies. The American Red Cross has been there hand-in-hand with us, serving our community during the most trying of times over the last several years. No one from our team in OES has really worked more with Red Cross over the years than Paul Cummings, who I'd like to introduce and discuss this partnership.
Thank you, Craig. Good morning, Chair Schofield, honorable board members. Also joined here today by Mr. Rod Lewis. He's the Disaster Assistance Supervisor for the Sierra Delta Chapter of the American Red Cross. So Nevada County OES, we'd like to recognize the strong partnership between our community, the County of Nevada, and the Sierra Delta Chapter of the American Red Cross. We've been working closely with representatives from the Truckee-based chapter. Specifically, I'd like to recognize Tammy Martin. And then from the Western Nevada County Chapter, Representative Daryl White, who's not here today, but he was here last year, to plan for, respond to, and recover from local disasters. Tammy and Daryl always answer their phones, day or night, seven days a week. I joked last year that, I mean, literally, 5:00 a.m. I called Daryl White and he starts getting his Red Cross volunteers going towards Nevada County for the Jones Fire, for instance, to stand-up shelters. They always are available. They always answer the phone. They're always ready to come support Nevada County when we are in need. They attend our local sheltering and disaster planning meetings. They stage disaster-related equipment in our community. And they show up at a moment's notice to our shelters. The Red Cross was a particularly necessary partner during the sheltering operations that followed the August 2021 river fire, the December 2021 winter storm, and then more recently this year, the February 2023 winter storm event. This nonprofit, mostly volunteer organization, is an essential and trusted partner that we've woven into our local disaster response planning efforts. And we're very thankful for their partnership. And that concludes my presentation, Chair. And I'll turn it back over to you, sir. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Thank you, Paul. Rod, thank you for joining us. Lisa, you want to? Oh, let me start with Hardy again. Hardy?
Well, thank you, Chair Schofield. I just thank you for the presentation and thank you just, you know, from everybody in District Five and the entire county for what Red Cross has done. There's other events and situations that Red Cross has shown up for in my period of living in Nevada County. And you're always there in the middle of the night, early in the morning, late at night. And I was friends with the Red Cross volunteer and he told me all the intricacies of being a volunteer and what it means and what is important to people when you have to serve them in those crisis situations. And I just have a tremendous amount of respect and just a sincere thank you for everything you've done for us. And I'd like to think that we're moving out of it and moving into an easier season with spring coming, but we still have a lot of work to do. So once again, thank you for being here and it's just greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Hardy. Lisa?
I also would like to express my gratitude for all the work that the Red Cross does in our community, especially to the volunteers who give up their time. And I never realized this, but I know that there's people who volunteer for the Red Cross who go from disaster to disaster. It's not just working in their own communities, but it's actually going out and helping in other communities. And I've always been really appreciative of that. So thank you for being here when we need you the most. And I know this has been a tough time the last few weeks and like, you know, maybe spring will be a little bit easier. I'm not sure with what's happening in the weather right now, whether we're going to have an easier season, but keep our fingers crossed for the fall with fire season. Thanks again.
Thank you, Lisa. Sue?
Yeah, thank you for being here today and thank you for being a part of an organization that is always there in a moment's notice. I fortunately, I wish we didn't have to have that, but it seems like it's been one thing after another here in our whole country. So as you watch across all the different states go and do different things, Red Cross is there. And we sure appreciate what you're doing in Nevada County and the team and all the volunteers. It's really a giving thing to come at a moment's notice and we just appreciate you so much. So thank you for being here today to accept this.
Thanks, Sue. Heidi?
Yep, ditto. Everything that's been said and I'll just give a special shout out to the collaboration. We couldn't be getting through all these storms and weather extremes and issues without collaboration with so many partners. And we all have to work together to get, because it's just been overwhelming. And so we appreciate so much the Red Cross being one of those partners and also the volunteers. I also want to give a shout out to the volunteers. That's true, true giving to be willing to get out there in the weather under tough circumstances and be part of the solution. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi. And I certainly agree with that. I know what you've been going through the last few weeks with us. I know you're greatly appreciative with your presence down at the Warming Center and working with our staff out there. And of course, I always think back to, I think my most recent one was the river fire. So you guys are with us all year long and it's greatly appreciated, Rod. And I know you didn't come here to say anything, but I do want to give you the opportunity.
Been for over 25 years up here as a volunteer.
Pull that mic down.
Oh.
There you go.
Yeah, I was a fireman for over 25 years. So the moment's notice is my pager went off, I went out. I retired. This is my next step. That's all.
Well, thank you for doing that, too. Is there any public comment on this? Not from the audience? Any callers, Madam Clerk?
No callers for this.
Very good. Then I'm going to read the resolution. We will vote on it and then we'll take a photograph, okay? This is Resolution Number 23-120 of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Nevada, Resolution Proclaiming March 2023 American Red Cross Month in Nevada County. Whereas over the last few years, much of California has experienced extreme weather conditions from wildfires to droughts and floods. And responding to these disasters has required a community approach. And whereas Nevada County is very thankful to have a strong partner in the American Red Cross's California Gold Country region, which has been only a phone call away responding to unmet needs in our community when disaster strikes. And whereas the humanitarian spirit is the foundation of our community and is exemplified by Red Cross volunteers and donors. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And whereas today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of the Red Cross volunteers here in Nevada County, who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy by volunteering, donating financially, or learning vital life-reserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas during the wildfires of 2021, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers gave hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours by providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by wildfires and local disasters like single-family home fires, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas we dedicated this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." And whereas we ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Nevada, State of California, hereby confirms and proclaims that March 2023 is American Red Cross Month in Nevada County. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Hooks, so moved.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Hook, seconded Supervisor Hall. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. District Four.
District Four, yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Five.
District Five, yes.
And District Two.
District Two, yes. All right, Craig and Paul, thank you so much. What do we got here? And we're back to Craig again? And we're back to an echo again. All right, this is Department Head Matters. This is a resolution approving contracts in aggregate not to exceed an amount of $750,000 for snow, tree, and debris removal services for the February 24th, 2023 winter storm. Craig?
Good morning again, Chair Schofield, members of the board. Craig Griesbach, your Nevada County Director of Emergency Services. As your board knows, on February 24th, our community was hit by a series of winter storms, bringing excessive amounts of snow, bringing down trees, and causing approximately 30% of our residents to be without power or communications. Many of our residents were also stuck in their homes due to the amount of snowfall and downed trees throughout our community. On March 1st, we proclaimed a local emergency and on the same day, the governor proclaimed a state of emergency. On March 9th, the president proclaimed a federal emergency due to the existence of these winter storms for 34 California counties, including Nevada County. In order to respond immediately to the community's health and safety, our Emergency Operations Center team enlisted the purchasing division to establish multiple contracts to support county road crew event response. These contracts were to help expeditiously remove snow, vegetation, and debris across our private and public roadways to ensure safe passage for our residents and first responders. Contractors included in this effort are CND Constructors, Hanson Bros. Enterprises, Robinson Enterprises, JW Bamford, Ridge Logging, and Fresky Construction. Our purchasing team sought contractors who were local, in the business of heavy equipment and roadwork, and could, who could mobilize quickly. Five of these contractors are local to Nevada County and one contractor, who is JW Bamford, is not local. However, this contractor is currently an incumbent of one of our county projects, removing hazardous trees throughout our community. And they were able to mobilize quickly, specifically to serve our residents in the Green Horn neighborhood area. These contractors' contracts are designed as an aggregate spend allowance to cover these services not to exceed $750,000. This contract design will allow us to move funding amongst these contracts more fluently, based on availability and overall capacity of contractors in the past and moving forward. Staff recommends approval of these contracts for the retroactive term, February 24th through June of this year, in response to the winter storm emergency. It is also important to note that these were not the only contract efforts in response to the emergency event. For example, we received local vendor support from Outlaw Foods and Emily's Catering, who responded to food fulfillment needs at our shelter. It has really been a community effort, just like response to any disaster or emergency. And I would like to thank all our contractors and vendors and partners that have helped us support and make our community whole again. I would also like to commend and thank our road crews, really, for their 24/7 work over the past several weeks. They've been out there breaking their backs and they're still out there right now, improving our roadway system. So thank you to those crews out there in the field. That concludes our presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I also have several staff are available to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. And yes, while this is a motion for a specific item for additional dollars for snow removal, et cetera, I think it's also an opportunity to kind of get an update on where we are storm-wise. So Sue, you want to start it? Oh, I'm sorry. Hardy, you got to get back here and sit next to me. You want to start it, Hardy? You have any comments or questions?
Well, thank you, Chair Schofield. Yeah, I do have a few questions and thank you, Craig. And just first, I'll start by thanking the OES department. And I was privileged to be in the OES department on one of the morning briefings. It was the amount of coordination and comprehensive kind of nature of bringing all those people and services together in the OES in the morning was just really impressive to me. So thank you to everybody who's serving that role and has been working really hard for multiple days and nights here for the last several weeks. I just want to say thank you first and foremost. But my question is, I understand the contracts that are in front of us for the trees and snow. I just had a quick question about maybe more of a global concept, but when we recurrently see these problems in different isolated neighborhoods, and I'll use North Bloomfield and that area as an example, when we talk about communications and power, whether it's from a fire or extreme heat or PSPSOM or whatever, and these snowstorms, can we, or should we be thinking about creating resource centers, like really small but localized neighborhood resource centers? And so what comes to mind is maybe like the church camp. And if they're out of power, maybe we pre-position generators or batteries to serve the needs of people that need to charge cell phones. Or maybe we get like a SAP runner, like the Sheriff's Department has, and deploy it in that neighborhood for that period of time. Should we be thinking along those lines of kind of micro neighborhood support centers when we are unable to serve the needs of those communities from a communication and also a power situation? I know that our job is not necessarily fixing all of those problems with communications and power, but meeting the unmet needs of those communities may be something we can think about in the future. And I know, just trying to think along the solutions that could offer some help because I had customers who somehow one message got out for one whole neighborhood because AT&amp;T was down and Verizon, both cellular and in the landline infrastructure was all down. So I'm just thinking about in the future, any potential we have to create some sort of really micro solution for short periods of time that may kind of get communications and maybe some phone charging and some other pieces tilted up out there.
Supervisor Bullock, thank you for that feedback. And dependent on the emergency that it actually exists, it kind of depends on and drives the need. We do work with partners to stand up community resource centers for charging, warming, supplies, resiliency kits, things like that. We do have partnerships, you know, for example, the North San Juan Community Center, and we stay in contact with those partners regularly during events. But this is definitely something we can partner with more out there in the community, especially in strategic areas, as you mentioned, Supervisor Bullock, Salvation Army, other partners that are out in these areas. That's something we'll be taking away for our after action from this event and be working on over this next year.
Yeah, thanks. And the communication side with Starlink and some of the Titan Biosat and some of the technology that's out there, I would even be, you know, thinking about solutions that maybe were year-round. So placing a Starlink in one of those outlying areas in case it came, you know, kind of essentially buying equity communications, you know, equity kind of in the future for when it actually happens. So just something to think about. I know that our role is limited in all that, but just things to think about. And again, really appreciate the work you guys are doing.
And one more point, Supervisor Bullock, too, is just we do look at deploying communication resources like we have in the past. We've deployed cows or cell-on-wheel devices to be able to have connectivity for certain communities in a certain bubble. We have worked with partners like the little town of Washington for the installation of Starlink and other connectivity. So, but there's definitely more we can be doing out there in the community and continue to build on what we have right now.
Yeah, thanks, Craig. I really appreciate it. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Hardy. Sue?
First, I just want to say thank you because what a couple, it's not been more than two weeks, it's been a month, it seems like at this point almost, right? And so it's been huge. And I just like to give a shout out to our local contractors as well. You know, they do drop what they're doing and they're here for our community and I think that says a lot. I know you've called them in the middle of the night or at a minute and really, they're all willing to give and I really appreciate that we have that kind of support in our community that works long. Again, it's a whole collaboration, right? So I'm not going to go on and on except for to say that I'm ever impressed that we keep improving. You know, you're always listening and changing. I think about where we first started in our first PSE, PS events and what those caused to where we are now. We don't get to predict the weather. We don't predict the catastrophe that's coming, but you guys have just done an incredible job. Do we want to keep doing better? Yeah, you guys talk about it. We as a community have to take some responsibility as well. We choose to live in a rural area, so we need to be prepared. So we keep putting that messaging out, so we need to work on that as well. I was impressed with, I talked to some lady the other day, she goes, I have my 10 days of food and water. She goes, and I'm out. I'm past this. But we didn't predict the snow. We don't predict that. So we do all just really need to take heed of that. We do live here. It is unpredictable. We have this wonderful community and the staff. I just, I was thinking of the guys working up, trying to plow in snow. I'm thinking of Hardy and Truckee. Holy moly. That's the incredible sight, you know, to see that piles of snow. What are you going to do with all that? I was just talking to somebody else up at Bassett. It's like, where do you move the snow? You know, I mean, that's Sierra County, but I'm just saying, we're all in a situation. And thank you for the hours and hours and hours that you guys spend. I kept asking if you guys had your cot here because I think there were a few nights you probably couldn't even make it home almost. So I think that dedication to your jobs is really well appreciated by our whole community. So. So I guess this is off-topic of passing a resolution to pay our contractors, but it just goes, it just is so included in all that we do here, so thanks, everybody.
Lisa?
I also want to thank you and all the people in the community and our county staff for how hard they've worked. Truly takes a village to work together in kind of, I guess, a little unprecedented situation. I've seen a lot of, I've seen snow like this in our community before, but never prolonged as much. We're snowed, we all plowed out or dug out, had to go back and do it again the next day and the next day, so, you know, I'm appreciative for the work and the people all working together, neighbors helping neighbors. I also want to say to my colleagues, thank you for creating the environment where we have the money to be able to pay for this, because oftentimes, people say, "Well, how come you hold all that money in reserve?" Well, these are the reasons that you do it, so you have the money when these types of emergency situations come up. So very grateful for the foresight that you guys all put into this before I got up here to have the money to be able to do it. So a couple of questions. If people still haven't had the communication, how can people go about finding out how they can still get help from the county for clearing? On our website, or is there anything special that we have set up for people to be able to take advantage of some help right now?
So there's several communication pathways. We have a one-stop shop website. It's mighty NevadaCounty/storminfo, so they can go to that, and that is updated regularly with contacts, whether that be our Public Works teams, OES, or whoever that may be. So that is probably the best resource. They can always call OES at 530-265-1515, and it is a community effort, but that's, those are probably the best resources.
Great, thank you. And also, I really appreciate us moving forward with a proactive approach, just what we talked about at our meeting last week, where perhaps in the summer and the fall, we can start planning better for some of these things. We really need to work on with PG&E. I think that was our weakest link throughout all of this. Somebody posted on social media the other day that they pointed out that Truckee got 30 feet of snow, and the power really had very minimal power outages up there. How do we create that kind of resiliency on the western side, too, so we're not dealing with these extreme outages for people moving forward? So thanks for all the work that you guys are doing.
Lisa? Heidi?
I want to start also by thanking you so much, Craig, Paul, Tricia, the Public Works Crew, Allison, everybody who's been working just nonstop, I know, 24/7. Craig, I think you and Allison have been getting emails from me every single day, including through the weekends, Tricia some, too, and you're always responsive. We've really been on throughout this whole event, and I just want to express my appreciation to all of your staff also who've been out there doing this. Also, thank you to the contractors that we brought on, to them for stepping up and jumping in right away. I think we got them on board faster than last year as well, right? So we learned already, we've already set up systems, I think, that are, we've learned from last year what we need to do and how we can be faster and better. So I appreciate that as well. I also want to, oh, I want to suggest, I think, the fact that we have these contracts, like, we couldn't do this without them. We couldn't do this by ourselves, and I just want to take a step back and comment on the county's preparedness overall, that we've been preparing for this, we've been, we prepared last year. We just have this proactive approach that is so key. And note that San Bernardino County, where they're finding people who have died, a dozen, I read, already, because they couldn't, no one could get to them, because they weren't prepared, because the county frankly was prepared. They quoted the CEO saying, "Hindsight was 2020, and if they, they would have, if they knew more, they would have done better." You will not catch that happening in this county. We've taken these storms seriously from the beginning, and I think that's one of the keys. We assume for the worst, we plan for the worst, we hope for the best, and I'm very proud of this county for being so proactive and being willing to continue to learn and grow on all of this. So I just wanted to say that as well. It's awful what's happening in some of the other counties still that are trying to dig out. The one suggestion I have, just to continue on this conversation about communication, too, is that I realized only a couple of days ago, I think, maybe, maybe a week ago, I got a call, one of the constituent calls I got, out of many, was from a Facebook group for one of the neighborhoods. I wasn't aware they even had a Facebook group, and it was one of the administrators, and so I was, I did my best to get her a ton of information that she could share then with that neighborhood. So that's another place we could tap in as we learn about these neighborhood groups who are on their own, creating these systems of communication to help each other, and shout-out to them for doing it. That is what we need to do. But as they do that, you know, let us know. We can plug in ourselves, so we can get that information to those key groups. So I think when we think about needing to contract out for services, when we don't have enough staff or capacity to do this on our own, we need to think about our PIOs and communication staff as well, because just like you all ended up having to do much more than we were prepared for, had resources for, I think our communication staff ended up in the same position. It doesn't help also when we have people like PG&E doing this, you know, crazy publicity stunt of handing out, you know, cash cards in the middle of terrible weather that people tried to rush down to get. Honestly, I've heard from journalists, and I myself, and I've heard from staff, that this actually created a bigger problem for us, trying to explain and respond to people who ask, "What was it about? What was going on? Who was getting these? Why were we doing this?" And it wasn't us, it was PG&E, who probably didn't want to take any advice we might have on that. But it was, it's also our PIO folks who get stuck explaining what our contractors are doing, what PG&E is or isn't doing, what RACE and AT&amp;T and Comcast are or are not doing. And so we may want to think about next year or the next go-around, putting in place contracts so we can get more communication folks on board to help with all the suggestions I think that we're all having. I think that's it. I know we'll have, continue to have lots of conversations about what we can do better each time, but I'm just really proud of this county, how we stepped up. I think we, we set a model for how counties can make this happen. And I do want to acknowledge also, Sue is always good about this, shouting out to the neighborhoods and the folks who stepped up on their own, and reminding you all that we can't be everything to everybody, and people need to prepare themselves and help their neighbors, and do it right off the bat, and remain patient and calm as best they can as we go through emergencies like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. And I echo all those also, and I really say thank you to the staff and the folks around on the crews that are still out there. Did I hear that you've just lowered their, they only have to work nine-hour days? Is that what it is now? What was it? 12-hour days? Yeah, a lot of work, a lot of work. Greatly appreciated. And you know, I've seen some pretty good-sized storms here, too. The thing I have never witnessed here before is the building collapses. I've just, I've never seen that, and I'm wondering, how is a county working with those folks? This is a little bit different than a situation where a business or a home has been burnt down, where they have to deal with environmental health, that type of thing. We don't have those issues, do we? And I guess really, how are we working with those folks that have had their businesses impacted?
Chair Schofield, we're working with them on several different fronts. So essentially, what we're doing with our survey and surveying the damage across our entire community will help us get both federal and state assistance programs, not just potentially assistance and repayment for us, but also personal assistance programs, and that's the work we'll be putting in to the recovery. Paul has a ton of experience in that area, managing unfortunately too many other emergency events, so that is one way that we're going to be fighting for these residents and business owners to get them resources. We're also connecting them with state and other resources as we hear about them, whether that be through partners, the ERC. We're connecting them with Kimberly in our economic development team, so they're doing personal reach-outs. For example, auto metrics that receive damage, reaching out to those folks, seeing how we can help. We're pushing out messaging regarding permit waivers for reconstruction and resources related to that and expedited permitting process. So there's a bunch of different ways we're really trying to help them solve and rebuild and return to normalcy.
And I did hear this morning coming in, our building department is working closely with those folks also, correct?
Correct, Chair Schofield. Our building department has been out night, day, out there surveying buildings, making sure they're safe with our first responders.
Yeah. And then the, the survey, and you just kind of hit on it there, within the survey is the, perhaps, an opportunity for private properties for some sort of funding also? We don't know at this point, but it could be.
I'll let Paul talk to that a little bit more. He was recently looking at survey respondents. Late yesterday, we were around 800 respondents, which is really, really good.
Yes, Chair Schofield, and just, I'll make a quick plug for the survey. So this was a survey that county staff put together. They did a great job. It's www.nevada county ca.gov/stormsurvey. And what residents can do is they can go on there and they can put down their address, their contact information, what type of damage they had, if they had trees come down, if they had, you know, roofs collapse, if they have telecommunications issues, propane issues, and they can actually take that survey every day, and they can keep stacking that information on there. And what we're doing is we're mining that daily, and as things are slowing down and people have utilities and things restored, it's less necessary, but we were taking that daily and getting it to the telecommunications companies, saying, "Hey, these are the addresses of people that have had outages." And so what we hope to do is to take that information and maybe create a listserv, or we can then reach back to folks who've self-identified as having damage. And then what I'm doing then is taking all this kind of quantifiable data, where we're saying there's 200 people who've had less than $25,000 in damage, and there's this many people who've had this much damage, and then we push it up to the state, and we make that argument for residents to say, "Hey, you know, in our community, we've had $14 million of resident damages." And so then we can make that argument for not only state, but federal assistance for individuals, and that's called individual assistance, the IA program, and that'll bring, if we are, if we can get that for residents, and we're, it's a process we have to work through, it'll bring in, you know, housing support, legal support for residents, there's even some, you know, cash support, that there's some, you know, cash reimbursements for some losses that we can try to get residents, and so it seems like our county would be a good candidate for that, considering all the damages that we've seen from this storm, and with a federal declaration, but that's, that's something that we have to continue to push for. So that's why that survey is so important, so that we have that information to then take to the state and federal government.
Yeah. Heidi?
Yeah, I'm so glad this came up. Thank you. So I'm trying to think, do you want a database for people who are going to need help and to help bring the funds and resources down to get them help? But you also need a database to just understand the damage overall to help make the argument for the help we need?
Yes.
So even like, the tree damage on my property, I'm not asking for any help, but it would be helpful for you to know?
I think it would be. I mean, if it caused damage to like a structure, that's important, you know, for us to get along. And also, there's a business survey. I'd like to recognize the economic development team that's putting together a business-focused survey that should hopefully go out later today or tomorrow, that that'll, that'll go out through, through their channels and through the chamber to focus on those business-specific losses, whether it be revenue, you know, employee injuries, physical damage, so that we can start to separate those out as well, because there's things that we can, resources we can bring in, like small business association loans and things like that, to help businesses with losses as well. So the survey is really important.
And so I know this is a little different than that, too, but also, we had that message from the assessor as well, so people can apply for those with your assess, your property value assessments. There's going to be credit for that if there's been damage, and it's going to take time to get done, so you have to do that through the assessor's office, I think. I think you have a year to do it, but that's, I mean, everything, every little bit probably helps in a disaster, right?
Well, you know, we, we pat ourselves on the back for a job well done, but it doesn't take away, or it doesn't minimize the impact that citizens have had out there, and you guys know that better than anybody, so I, I don't, I don't want to sit up here and feel good about ourselves without recognizing it's been very stressful for people out there. But that survey is another example of Heidi saying, "We've been pretty prepared on this, because that survey is something new, too." So again, my thanks to everybody, all our volunteers and partners, and our staff in particular that's out there, so thank you, guys. Is there any public comment on this? Madam Clerk, is there anybody on the phone?
We have no callers.
Very good. I think we can entertain a motion.
So moved? Second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to get Hardy, okay. A motion by Supervisor Hall, seconded by Supervisor Bullock. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
District five, yes.
And district two.
District two, yes. Thank you, thank you, Craig, thank you, Paul. I think we have time. Do we need a break? Are we good? Okay. All right, at this time, our next item is an individual board member item, and it happens to be mine. This is a resolution amending Section 3 and Section 5 of Resolution 21035, extending the sunset and dissolution of the South County Area Municipal Advisory Council to December 31st, 2024. And I'm going to turn this over to Jeffrey to speak on this, and then I'll kind of fill you in afterwards.
Thank you so much, Chair Schofield, members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Thorsby. I am your senior management analyst. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you so much to your work, Supervisor, and working with the Municipal Advisory Council and the Greater Higgins Area Plan. So before you today, just as the supervisor described, I'm going to provide a little bit of background and some of the rationale for why this item is coming before you today. So starting off, California Government Code, Section 31010, actually allows the Board of Supervisors to establish and provide funds for the operations of the Municipal Advisory Council. As you well know, in 2017, the Board created and established its first Municipal Advisory Council, called the Penn Valley Area Municipal Advisory Council. And maybe also just some orientation, I helped staff the Penn Valley Area Municipal Advisory Council for the first, I believe, three years of its existence, and then have been working in, in the current staff for the South County Area Municipal Advisory Council. That being said, when the county engaged in its area plan process for Penn Valley, they worked closely with the Penn Valley Area MAC, and that's, we refer to the MAC as Municipal Advisory Council. We worked closely with them, and so in 2019 to 2020, the Penn Valley Area MAC worked closely as an advisory body and a sounding board for the successful implement, development of the Penn Valley Area Plan and its eventual adoption. The Penn Valley Area Plan is, pardon me, the Penn Valley Area MAC is a permanent Municipal Advisory Council for the county. So as the county began gearing up for its process in terms of developing the Higgins Area Plan, on February 9th, 2021, the Board established the South County Area Municipal Advisory Council. The purpose for the MAC was to review and make recommendations to the supervisor and the Board on the process and on the update of the Higgins Area Plan, and then also to promote, support, and actively participate in community engagement activities to help promote the development process. Notably, though, is Resolution 2135, which established the South County Area Municipal Advisory Council. I'm getting good at saying that. Notably, though, that the establishing resolution actually had a sunset trigger to dissolve the MAC upon the exact adoption of the Higgins Area Plan. As you know, the plan is coming before you this afternoon at 1:30. As you know, the plan is coming before you this afternoon at 1:30. So since the formation of the MAC, the MAC has actually engaged directly with planning staff, the county's consultant placeworks, in the community throughout the entire development process for the area plan, and which has included meeting monthly since its formation, only taking a couple of meetings off, meeting, several special meetings, as well as having subcommittees to help promote the development and to promote the outreach effort for the plan effort, and then including participating in several community-wide meetings. On December 12th, 2022, the MAC actually held a special meeting, reviewed and provided its recommendation, including some small minor adjustments to the plan. Those were incorporated, which then the Planning Commission voted unanimously to bring before you later this afternoon. So in February of 2023, just two months ago, the MAC discussed at its regular meeting the option of continuing, continuing as a body to help provide advice to the supervisor, the Board, and the Planning Commission if needed, to provide recommendations on the implementation of the Greater Higgins Area Plan, should it be adopted, provide recommendations, provide recommendations on land use and development projects as directed by the supervisor or the Board of Supervisors. And then most importantly noted by them, which was also to provide input to the community. So not just providing feedback to the county, but helping provide input and information as a conduit for the county to the public. So that being said, the recommendation for you today is a resolution that would amend the forming resolution of the South County Area MAC to extend the sunset clause and its dissolution to December 31st, 2024. Also, we would be recommending the continuation of the current MAC's annual budget of $2,500. That's the same annual budget that the other MAC has. And we would recommend that that be approved through the annual budget process, not, not, so that's not before you're here today, but we do recommend that. And then we also recommend, and should the Board adopt the resolution and extend the MAC, we would work with the MAC to look at shifting its meetings. Currently, the MAC has been meeting monthly, but we would probably be recommending to meet quarterly. I think it's important to balance staff resources with the need on, on providing input as needed. And then we would be coming back to you with an amendment of their bylaws should you extend their clause to move forward. So that's, in summary, basically what is before you this morning, and I'll turn it back over to you Supervisor Schofield.
Thank you, Jeff. And throughout this process, I want to thank our, the staff, the CEOs, office staff, primarily Jeff and Sarah, Barbara Price, when she was with us, sat in on quite a few of the meetings, took the minutes for us, greatly appreciated. And the place works for the efforts that they put into it. When we created this, I mean, that's one of the deals, that this was not going to be a permanent situation, that it would sunset once it is approved. And what has happened with this is, first of all, we assembled this, what I think of as a pretty amazing group of people to represent the Higgins area and the South County on the MAC. And we also found throughout the process that it's one of the things that's lacking down there, is a body such as the Penn Valley Chamber of Commerce, that we no longer, there's no chamber down there any longer. So it began to serve as a community function coming in and talking to us. The plan that came for, to us from Lake of the Pines, about the, the lake center and what they thought they might want to do with it, was something that came through the MAC. We didn't, hadn't even seen it here at this level. So I saw, and the MAC saw, the team saw a really, a opportunity to proceed with the MAC, with the hope that maybe it may segue into something else later down the line. And I'm recommending, suggesting a sunset again, as, what is it, the, December 31st, 2024, which is the end of my term here. So with that, before I open it up to the, to the Board, I, I do have our vice chair, Jim Mathias, and I hate to kind of put you on the spot, Jim, but would you mind coming down and giving us some, some thoughts?
Thanks, Chair Schofield, and Honorable Supervisor, CEO Lehman. Nice to be able to speak here. I'm glad this isn't moving because the only time I get nervous with public speaking is when I find out I only have three minutes. So that's, that's pretty much, yeah, I want to speak to it because I have a lot of experience with MACs. In my previous life, I was, I gave monthly presentations at five different ones, so that's five days a month. But Chair Schofield is exactly right. He assembled just this great group of folks that really did a good job at, you know, varying histories and experience levels and things that they have done in their life. And our single focus was to put together the, the plan, the Higgins Area Plan, and that's nearing completion. But as we were patting ourselves on the back for what a great job that we thought we had done, we found out that the community was missing something down there. They were missing a, a place where people could get together. We certainly had the Espoa and Alta Sierra and Lake of the Pines has their group, but something that got everybody all together, which was a community meeting where a lot of things could take place. A lot of things like, you know, large developments that may be coming along, some advice from our law enforcement partners, any reports that OES could give out for this kind of information that we're dealing with right now. All those things were great pieces of information. We're just kind of lacking something in the South County to be able to, that the community knows that there's a place they can go and get information, and we can take that information and we can deliver it to Supervisor Schofield, so he can deliver it to you. So we were missing that. We also brought down the Penn Valley MAC Chair, and, and he spoke and said the same thing. It was that they started becoming this community meeting that people knew was always going to be held in the same place at the same time, and it's just a great way to get information out. Like I said, I've had a lot of experience with it. I, I really do think it's a great way to get information from your community and up to Supervisor Schofield. I'm sure Supervisor Hook, you probably dealt with it quite a bit, where they bring in information for you. And, and I just hope that we can continue that on. I think it's something that's missing in the South County, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jim. Now I'm going to pull back from that and come back to the Board. And Heidi, I'm going to, I'm going to start with you on this one. More of a history there.
Thanks, Ed. Yeah, yeah, we had a good discussion when this was established and, you know, I, I had my hesitations, I think, but this has been so great for you, it sounds like, to get that direct input and for the community, it sounds like going both directions. I can see that with the plan being adopted, there's still going to be lots of decisions and, and communication needs down there. And I don't have any questions. I think it's a great idea to continue for another couple of years.
Wonderful. Thank you, Heidi. Hardy?
Oh, thank you, Chair Schofield. I don't have any questions. I'm support, in, in support of it extending to the December 31st, 24 deadline, and I just really commend everybody for having that forward-facing public process. I, I support the transparency and the, you know, the, kind of that ability for people to get into a conversation and talk about things they care about in that community. So I, I just want to say, job well done for making that happen. It can be, I know that can be a little stressful sometimes, and, and also a lot of internal staff work meeting at night and on weekends to try and meet people where they are in that community, but I, I just, I'm really happy I followed the process since I got on the Board, and I think you've done, done a great job with it, so supportive.
Thank you, Hardy. Sue?
Oh, well, thanks, Ed. I support this as well. I, I find that my Municipal Advisory Council, it's been good because my district is so spread out for mine, and I love that opportunity that I have Lake Wildwood, I have Rough and Ready, I have out on Brittany Springs. So you get this diverse members in your team too that come and share what's going on in their area. And when you look at different land use issues, or it's been a great way to have, like, we just had our building, our new building director come down and explain some different things. And then we use them as a catalyst to get it back out in each of those areas too. So it kind of works with them spreading the word of what we're doing inside here, as well as bring back to me issues that are going on in those parts of the community to help. So I really support this for you. I think extending it is a great idea.
Wonderful. Lisa?
I don't have any questions, but I also support this as well. You know, MACs are new, because when you're in the, my district, you have the city. So it's, you know, kind of a similar process. But I agree it's important for the South County community to have a centralized point of communication. And I have several really close friends who are part of your MAC, and so last year, I actually got some great education for them when I was running for office. So kudos to you for putting together such a fantastic team of people who want to be involved in the community, and I support extending it.
Thank you, Lisa. And just a comment that we're not sure every member of the MAC, the current members, will stay with us. I mean, that was their original purpose, was the creation of the new area plan. So one of the opportunities that we'll be looking at in future meetings is perhaps expanding a bit beyond just the Greater Higgins area, and maybe get up more into even the Alta Sierra area. So as your, your MAC has done, so. I, Madam, or County Counsel, is it appropriate for the Chair to make a motion? I'd like to make the motion.
I think, I think since it is your item, that would be okay, but normally you would ask, or pass the gavel and, and then make your motion.
Note that Supervisor Hook, media past Chair, and now is the current Chair, and with that, I'd like to make the motion to approve. Oh, no, wait a minute. Is there any other public comment? Amy? No? Madam Clerk, are there any calls?
There's no callers for this item.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make that motion to extend the period to December 31st, 2024, for the Greater Higgins Area MAC.
I love that. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Oh, it's been moved and seconded. Julie, can you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
District five, yes.
And district two.
Yes.
Fantastic. And now relinquish the chair, back to the chair.
You know, I don't want to name the members of the MAC real quick. Aaron Sullivan was our Chair, not able to be here. I think some of them may be back in the afternoon session. Jim Mathias was our Vice Chair, William Chekvala, Tony Gonzalez, Brian Hamilton, Vicky Hawkins, Mary Jane Huguenard, Jake Jacobson, Gloria Siegel, Gary Baker, and Dallin Packard. Great, great group of people. But thank you all. Yeah, I owe you all. All right, at this time, I believe we are going into closed session. Kit, will you read us out?
Yes.
Or in?
Chair Schofield, it's being suggested that you do board announcements first and then go to closed session, but at the discretion of the Board.
Very good. We can do announcements. Who would like to start? Heidi?
I'd be happy to. I'm going to keep it short this time. I did have a Western interregional states, Western states NACO call, so I'm staying up on what's going on there. We have a NACO meeting coming up, and I did attend a CSAC board meeting. The main focus of that board meeting was a new homelessness plan that CSAC has just rolled out publicly yesterday or over, over the weekend, which is a comprehensive approach to homelessness that they're presenting to the Governor, asking him to create this plan and, and, which includes every single aspect of homelessness, and look at continuous funding for it, so that we aren't continuing to need to grab for grants for this piece and that piece and the other piece. So they've worked with the legislature, I believe, some members of the legislature. I think there's anticipation to see what this plan contains, and a hope that this might help us move forward in a general way on homelessness. So take a look at it if it's out there. I think there'll be press conferences and so on coming, coming along. I think it's a good plan. I think we, we will like it. I think we're already have all those pieces in place here, but the idea that the state would have a comprehensive plan and then potentially a more centralized way to fund the whole thing would be super helpful to all of us. I did attend the Sierra Nevada Conservancy meeting and the watershed improvement, watershed, watershed meeting that happened the, the day before, which looked at the, the connection between protecting watersheds and wildfire. So that was very interesting, and I think the way we're starting to look at force management and water being intricately linked, water quality and, and quality, quality and quantity. Anyway, so those were some of the key from the last two weeks, but mostly I've spent time helping constituents with their needs through this storm, emails and phone calls, and trying to help folks get connected to whatever it is they need and answering their questions and, and so on. So it's been, been very, felt very connected to my community the last few weeks. I know there's still people out there waiting for help, and, and it's on its way. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Heidi. Lisa?
I too have spent the last couple of weeks fielding constituent calls and, and emails and trying to help people as much as possible. Pretty much every single meeting that I had scheduled over the last two weeks was canceled, including the area foreign aging, which was in Sacramento, but they canceled it, or postponed it, I should say, in, you know, reference to all of us who probably would have had a difficult time making it down there. I, you know, oftentimes when people called me, there wasn't really a lot I could do to help them other than just to listen, and people were very kind and appreciative of just getting a call back and having somebody that they could vent to. I also want to express my disgust with PG&E for the stunt that they pulled on Sunday. Not only was it, I think, not very well conceived, but the fact that they did it here at the county building without notify, I mean, I've never, no one told us about it, I don't believe.
Oh, Supervisors, well, they did coordinate to use our location with the EOC, and we were notified the day before.
Okay. Well, I found out about it on social media and just after the fact, but I, I think that the way that it was done, it just left way more questions than answers or help for people. So I hope in the future, if they're going to do things like that, that they can coordinate a little bit better with how they're going to do it. And I have had a lot of people reach out to me, wanting to know if there was any way that the county was going to be working with PG&E for bill relief for people. And, you know, I know obviously that's a question that we need to answer, but I was just really disappointed with how the whole thing was rolled out and how many, how much negativity I saw about the whole thing on social media. So, you know, I know that these are trying times. I know that there are a lot of people who need immediate help, and we're working the best that we can to help people, be patient, reach out for the type of help that they need. But I think in that respect, they could have done better.
Thanks, Lisa. Sue?
Okay. Well, I've been a busy gal here, but first I'd just like to say it was kind of when we had Red Cross here today and talked about retired fire, I want to say it's, we just welcomed Jim Mathias to Fire Safe Council. I think that's exciting to have you back, and we'd be remiss in saying that Fire Safe Council hasn't done a tremendous job out shoveling and pivoting and doing the work that needs to get done out in our community as long as, and CAL FIRE. There's so many people to thank, you can't even keep the list going, but we are so excited to have you working in our community alongside our Fire Safe Council because you guys are busy and we've got so many, you've got so many projects that you guys got in the work. So still some excess and functional needs funding out there, so if anybody's out there that needs that. that needs that, go on the website, or call Jamie, and get hooked up with that, because there'll be a lot of work now with the storm damage and trees down. So, lots of work. So, congrats on that. And then I want to put out another congrats. We just filled the Code and Cannabis Compliance Director, and Matt Kelly, who is, was in our Planning Department, we're really excited, really excited. So, congrats to Matt. And I know he's going to do a fabulous job, and I just can't wait, because I know when he answers that phone, because that's one of my continuous kinds of staff things that I have to go through. So, those are just the two welcomes, and congratulations on that. And then, yeah, I was at the CSAC Rule Caucus meeting, was really, really interesting at home, is the acronym, I guess, and I won't go through all that, but it was really good, so stay tuned. Had a really busy week with RCRC. I had a meeting with women in RCRC, and that was wonderful. We met with one of, just kind of, women in supervisor positions, looking at rural counties. And so that was great. We had a regular RCRC meeting that was jam-packed with a lot of information from GSFN, there's all those acronyms, and I won't go on to that, because that meeting went on, those are long meetings, but a lot of good stuff. I think the biggest one is we signed the contract with, for the broadband. So that's exciting to see that moving forward. Let's see, I had, I went also to ESJPA, which is, is like a solid waste JPA, which was really interesting. David Garcia, Tenzo's, and chock full of really goods, the presentations were good. And so, just a shout out, if you need paint, go to the Ree store. If you need some different kinds, I was amazed at the gallons of paint that are recycled and put back on the market. So, there's always something good to learn from those meetings, and I want to thank David for being so active. And he tends all those meetings and keeps up to, you know, as a one-man show in solid waste, he is very, very well-known in our, in our county. Appreciate him. And with that, we had interviews for Commission members for that yesterday, and thanks to Tricia and him for sitting in on those, were very interesting. We had a great meeting, was like a welcome, get to know, our new Senator Alvarado Gill. It was really well, and Senator Dolly. It was a Zoom meeting, and we just had about a half hour, but it was great to kind of talk about some of our needs, kind of look at what they're looking at. And I'm looking forward to building that new relationship with Senator Alvarado Gill, and of course, keep working with our Senator Dolly and Assemblywoman Dolly. Let's see, I did our Sierra Sack Valley EMS meeting was last Friday, that's Emergency Services. Like I say, it's kind of interesting, they manage our ambulance services. And even through all this, it's been pretty interesting to see how those numbers stay up, and how we're doing fairly well in the 90 percentile. Give thanks to all those folks that work here, because it's been crazy. I read one day where the ambulance had to pick the doctor up to get to the hospital, so they do go above and beyond as well. I had a Penn Valley Town Hall at the fire meeting, and that was all about education and transparency for the Rough and Ready Fire Department, and how that's going to move forward. Met with SR and my consolidation committee last week. And then, of course, fielded a lot of different calls from constituents. And again, that's where I got to thank Allison and that team, because I would respond, and then it would make, we would get it done, as good as we could. And my big one was, I got to give a shout out to CAL FIRE. I had some folks that had no wood, couldn't get any wood, and they found me, a truck was sideboarded full of wood, and was just really helpful up in North San Juan. And I think those are kind of the things that we're learning now, what could we do to be more prepared? But they just kind of went above and beyond that day, and it just really was, I just want to thank them so much for that. So Chief Estes was right on it, and it just, it shows how everybody can pull together in emergency. So, that's all I have for this day.
Thanks, Sue. Hardy?
Okay, thank you. Good to hear about everybody's good work happening during this stormy period. I'm going to keep it brief. I mentioned earlier, going into the OES during the morning brief, and I'd recommend that anytime the OES is activated. I just learned a lot, and got to see a lot of our team members in a bunch of different roles coming together on that call. So I learned a lot, and just another thank you to the people that are working those long hours. Something that's exciting, we got our conceptual development plan back from our private partner on the Hobart Mills workforce housing project that we're kind of doing some planning on, and it was really nice to see the contribution from that partner, and just working through that process to go with the Forest Service, and try and do an administrative lease, and get some workforce housing opportunities for the development community, and also for the Forest Service Hot Shot crews and others. So that's moving forward. A lot of staff support there, and we really appreciate the CEO's offices contributed to that project. I did have my CCC meeting, which occurs monthly. This one was a little tense. We've had paralyzing traffic and congestion impacts, both on Highway 80, 89, 267, Donner Pass Road, et cetera. But one of the, one of the small wins we got is we got Caltrans to move chain control out to state lines, so that they don't stop in Truckee, because when they stop in Truckee, everybody gets on the surface streets, and pretty soon, the whole community is basically locked down, and it's gridlocked. So, District Three Supervisor Mauricio Serrano has been a member, and he's on speed dial now, so we're making some headway in that group. And we also have a advisory group set up with the local area resorts, that we're going to meet with and talk about unified messaging, so we can tell everybody that thinks that coming to Tahoe when it's snowing, and on those busy parade weekends, they may need to rethink that, because there's some restrictions there. Yeah, I joined Supervisor Hook with Senator Alvarado Gill, and Senator Dolly, and Assemblymember Dolly as well. Good meeting there. Got to relay a little bit of our priorities for our rural county, and looking forward to working with them wherever possible over the next couple of years. And then we had our Truckee River Basin Water Managers Group Planning Call. And I can tell you that there was a lot to talk about, because I think we're going to be talking about the water, and everything coming out of Prosser, and Boca, and Stampede, and Donner that contribute to the Truckee. And we're going to hear from the Water Board and see what, what all this looks like. So next time I report out, I'm going to give you some stats on the Sierra snowpack and the water. I met with Tyker, who's a big constituent in District Five. They have their Marthas Valley Plant, which is an ag plant, and also an asphalt plant. And they also have the Boca Phase Two Quarry. We're specifically talking about the restrictions to their business operation, kind of linked and considering what's going on in Hurstville, with bridge reconstruction and alternate access through the road that goes through Hurstville. So, it's one of the constituents that is definitely part of that discussion. Hurstville had a great meeting with them down in Auburn last week. And then we had a good meeting with Placer County, the town of Truckee, and then our Nevada County staff regarding the library, the Truckee Library Project. We're looking at some bond polling, and trying to understand how bond polling will affect the ability of the capital campaign, and what sort of tolerance and capacity the community has to carry bond measures outside of Nevada County, more in Placer County. But it was a good discussion, finally, to get into the room with all of our partners and talk at one, one place and one time. The town of Truckee is considering doing a vacancy tax. We don't know a lot about it yet, but I met with individual Town Council members, and also Town Staff regarding that, consumed a little bit of my week, just trying to understand what their thoughts and what their plans are with that. Supervisor Hall and I, yes, yesterday, met with the California Department of Insurance, and had a great meeting. We didn't find it, you know, quite as many solutions as we had of thought to the, to the issue specifically related to insurance for fire districts and fire departments, and volunteer fire departments. But we have some good lead, and our Congressional Support Staff is definitely lending a hand in that. So I think we're headed in the right direction. Definitely more conversations to come. I don't know, do you want to add anything to that, Heidi? Did I miss, miss anything?
Thanks, I forgot to mention that. I just want to thank Jeffrey, who's worked on this for months, to try to get a meeting with the Commissioner on this, and for the fire districts to help them with this insurance cost, these, you know, extravagant insurance costs. We went through everything, including how we can advocate at the state and federal level, and how they can help us do that. And it was a fairly disappointing meeting. So, I think there's some things we could do, like you said, but we'll keep working on it. But yeah, thanks, thanks, Hardy, for raising that.
You bet. I'll tell a quick story. I got a call from somebody who was out of town checking on a resident in Washington, the little town of Washington. And, you know, our staff was so helpful. I texted Craig, and then Craig texted me, and then we got on a text thread with the person who was representing people that were stuck in Washington, and they got a welfare check done really quickly. I think that was within 15 or 20 minutes. They had all this rounded up, and all these connections made. So, still dealing with constituent issues in those outlying areas, but just thanks again to OES staff, and really having that connected piece between our, my constituents, and our shared constituents in Nevada County, and the, and the staff. So just a huge thank you there. The town of Truckee declared an emergency. That's the first time, if I remember, I don't know, Allison may know, but I don't ever remember the town of Truckee declaring an actual emergency, except maybe the floods in 2000 or something. But they did do that, and followed our lead. I think Sue and I had a Penn Valley, maybe LAFCO advisory or informational meeting with SR, which was very helpful to me to understand the challenges that we face. I'm also on LAFCO, so I have some other additional information behind that. Learned a lot. And then, lastly, I'd like to introduce our new analyst and CEO Support Staff in Truckee that's recently been hired. This is Mandy Stewart, and she's dialing in, so I'll let her say a few words, and then we'll conclude. Take it away, Mandy.
Hi. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you Supervisor Bullock for that brief introduction. I am the new analyst in District Five, supporting both the Board Supervisors, as well as the County Executive Office. This is week one for me, so big start, starting during a state of emergency, but I'm hoping to come up to speak quickly, and I'm looking forward to meeting you all in person very soon.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to working with you.
Welcome, Mandy.
Yeah. And, yeah, it's like a fire hose in that office, all kinds of information going at Mandy, and she's doing a great job, so thanks. Looking forward to working with you. That's it, Chair Schofield. Thank you.
Thank you, Hardy. Thank you for keeping it short.
And way to show us up, both Sue and me, remembering stuff that we've forgotten.
I'm with Lisa, all of my meetings were canceled. I did have one very, personally, for me, any special meeting, and that, we did meet with Congressman Kylie. And this was a situation where we found out he was coming, and got a phone call. He's going to be here maybe around eight o'clock or so in the morning. Well, it turned out, he made it here around 10:00. And on my way here, I got as far as the Mexican restaurant at Altisiera, and something didn't sound right, I had a flat tire. So Allison sent a deputy down to pick me up, and drive me in, which was pretty cool. But it was my first real interaction with, with the Congressman, and frankly, I was pleased. I thought it went very, very well. And it came from Jan Arbuckle with the City of Grass Valley, so that's greatly appreciated. And I think the Congressman got to see what was going on, very well represented with OES, fire districts, most people that were involved with First Response were there, and I thought it was very well. And I think when we talk about trying to find help for our citizens, I think he's going to be on our side and really supporting us. So it was really great to see him. That was good. And then I also had a meeting with the Chief of Consolidated Fire. And I think, you know, what they were doing is very much like what our own Sheriff's Department was doing, but I, the thought I had was that this, these types of emergency kind of bring it all together. Actually, Jan Arbuckle was the Speaker at our Rotary Club this morning, and she mentioned it also, that the city and the county have worked very well together throughout this. So, I just think that's a real plus, coming out with, working with our fire districts, and some of our other partners that we don't normally see that much of. I attended my, Dark Horse had their annual meeting, and I attended that last Saturday, which was quite interesting. Not a lot of big issues down in that area, which is really nice. And then, of course, our own Higgins MAC meeting that we had. And I want to introduce a gentleman out there, the fellow sitting up front there, is Mr. Gary Baker. And he is a member of our MAC. And I'm sure we told everybody that we would be later in the morning. And Gary, we've gone through it all, and we've passed it, and we've extended it, so thank you for coming in, greatly appreciated. And with that, we will take a recess and go into closed session. County Counsel, please.
Yes. So, County Counsel is requesting a closed session to discuss the following existing litigation case, Tuck's Restaurant versus the County of Nevada. And then, it's my understanding, we will recess into closed session and come back and report out after lunch. Is that correct?
What, yes. Yes, of course.
And then, any public comment?
Is there any public comment on this particular issue? Madam Clerk?
No callers.
Very good. Thank you, Kit. We're going to take a real quick break before we close session. We're going to take a real quick break before we close, uh, closed session.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events we want to have a broad scope for. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, "This is how you have to protect your home." That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. It's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That could be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. I picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, "This is how you have to protect your home." That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space. educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. It's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang, picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand? okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. I picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how, if it wasn't for my neighbor, who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place. You know, a destination that everybody will get to. Everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices. Reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really, what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really, anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang, picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, they're outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when-
We will reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the Board, March 14th, 2023. County Council, will you read us back in?
Yes, Chair Schofield, we met in closed session and direction was given to staff.
Thank you. And I would like to make a statement following our closed session on the topic that was discussed in November 2020. The Restaurant Coalition, a restaurant membership association led by Far Tux, sued the County of Nevada, the State of California, and certain Nevada County officials in a case called Tux Restaurant versus County of Nevada Board of Supervisors. The Restaurant Coalition's lawsuit is based on allegations that the public health orders issued to combat the spread of COVID-19 harmed their businesses by placing unconstitutional restrictions on indoor dining services. The fact is that the County of Nevada was simply enforcing the state's public health orders in 2020 and '21. It is worth noting that the governor has revoked the COVID state of emergency just last month. The Restaurant Coalition is seeking $500,000 compensatory damages and attorney fees and cost. To date, the county has spent over $160,000 on outside legal counsel fees to defend our community against this lawsuit. This litigation is still active. Thank you. And with that statement, we'll move back to our agenda. Our afternoon session is the public hearing to consider the approval of the Higgins Area- Greater Higgins Area- Area Plan. Ryan, it's yours.
Thank you, Chair Schofield. Good afternoon, Board. With me is Bruce Brubaker with Placeworks, and we'll be giving the presentation. I will start and turn it over to Bruce here in just a minute. But as you mentioned, we are here to consider the adoption of the Greater Higgins Area Plan. A little bit of background, the original plan was adopted, or the existing Higgins Area Plan was adopted in 2000. And as we know, there's been quite a bit of changes over the last 23 years in that area. So definitely was due for an update. We have five area plans in the county, this being one of them. Our most recent area plans that have been updated in the last couple of years include the Soda Springs Area Plan as well as the Penn Valley Area Plan. And we use those plans as a model for consistency for the Higgins Area Plan. But the Higgins Area Plan also has some other components that those plans do not, which we will touch on. This project was funded through a LEAP grant, the Local Early Action Planning Grant, which allowed us to contract with Placeworks to prepare the document and engage with the public. So the purpose of an area plan is it's basically a subset of the general plan. And it is to establish a comprehensive vision for future development of a certain area, a specific area, in this case, the Higgins Corner area. It takes into account housing opportunities, economic-type development, as well as arts, culture, recreation, and any other community land uses and needs. It's intended to serve as a blueprint for future development, just like our larger general plan. It contains land use designations for all types of different business, as well as single-family and multifamily development. It contains policies that promote and support economic development, ensures planning for public facilities and services are in place so that those things can support the area, the residents and visitors of the area. It contains a number of design goals and guidelines for future development, for architectural treatment and the aesthetic of the area. And it's a complimation, compilation, excuse me, of the community engagement process. And part of the community engagement process that has occurred over the last two years during this development, working with the South County Municipal Area Advisory Council. Your board talked about this group earlier this morning. And they were a very important partner as part of the development of this project. They were made up of local citizens and helped not only staff, but our consultant engage with the community and provided, acted as a sounding board for the public to get information, to provide ideas that were transformed into goals and policies and contained in the document, as well as providing their own input and vision to staff. And hopefully, we've captured that and put it together in the plan before you today. Just briefly, the plan area, you won't see it too well, but the original plan area was essentially just along Comby Road. There's a little black dotted line that was the original plan boundaries. And this area plan expanded to include other areas of the community out toward Hacienda, West Hacienda, as well as the other side of Highway 49, as well as the scenic corridor down to the Bear River. We also looked at areas of influence that have an impact on the actual plan area, including Lake of the Pines, Dark Horse, and Rancho's. So the idea was to engage residents from inside and outside the plan area, which we believe we've done. And the plan really focuses on areas that have the potential for growth, identified opportunity sites for future development and future needs to serve the community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce. Bruce to talk about the plan and the development of the plan.
Thank you, Brian. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. Bruce Brubaker with Placeworks. We're, I'm very happy to be here today at the, as Brian said, the culmination of the process. I'll describe a little bit about the community engagement plan, which I think was extensive for this plan. We held a series of stakeholder interviews with different interests in the area. I think there were four different stakeholder interviews where we grouped people together and discussed issues that were in their minds and talked about potential solutions. We also held four community workshops. This project commenced during the pandemic, so these workshops were virtual workshops, online, held on Zoom. But we did get really good response in all of these workshops. We got at least 60 people signing in each time. We also held regular meetings with the MAC, and they were a great help in not only advising on the plan itself, but in getting community outreach and getting people to the meetings and getting input from the community. And some of the MAC meetings, the later MAC meetings, were in-person. And those were all public meetings where there was, some of them were really quite well-attended by public, as well as the MAC. The outreach methods we used were website, email, social media, direct engagement. There was flyering. The MAC actually helped sponsor some tables in front of the Holiday Market. So there was an extensive effort to alert the entire community there that this plan was happening. And there was a planning commission hearing prior to this hearing, which was also a publicly noticed meeting. Next slide. So I'll talk about the plan, the organization of the plan, seven chapters. Each of those chapters addresses a different topic. We did not go into the plan effort knowing what was being the plan. This was actually a kind of an organic process to find out what the issues were and develop the plan accordingly. So all of these chapters came, kind of came out of discussions that we had with community and staff. And there is also an appendix containing design guidelines, which I'll talk about, too. So I'll talk about each of these chapters in turn. The introduction is really talking about what the idea, the vision, the guiding principles of the plan is. Here's a vision statement that was crafted with the MAC and the community, basically saying that everyone there really sees it as a rural area. They like the character of Western County, but they do see the need, or the plan sees the need, to accommodate future development and make sure that it's in keeping with the community's vision. Next slide. Some of the key sites in the plan area were, we called, opportunity sites. We did, we did some analysis of properties that were either designated for multifamily housing, in some cases, or commercial, in other cases. But these were sites that are likely to change in the future. So we identified 13 sites. Almost all of them were concentrated in two spots, either Higgins Corner, which is the area where the pharmacy is, the Chevron Station and the Holiday Market right at 49, and Combi, or Lake Center, which is the other commercial center of the Higgins Area, which is at South Combi, Combi, Magnolia, and Hacienda. The general plan designations for these opportunity sites were, as I mentioned, a commercial, in some cases, office, and high-density residential. Next slide. So, Chapter Two is focused on land use and community character. What is the existing land uses there? What's the existing community character there? From that, we developed two community design districts, really focused on Higgins Corner and the Lake Center. And we developed some goals and policies to kind of focus on land use in those two areas. So I will say that each of the chapters has a different set of policies, goals and policies attached to it. So in this case, these are the land use goals and policies. And they do cover growth, multifamily housing, but also single-family housing and commercial. Next slide. Chapter Three is economic development. Placeworks has an economic development, or an economist on staff, our chief economist, Steve Gunnels, helped develop this plan, did some market surveys and research to see what could be expected in the future in the Higgins Area in terms of commercial development and also housing development. That's all contained in the chapter. There is some market potential for residential and also for non-residential uses in the area over the next 20 years. And there's goals and policies to really encourage business development, to get the type of development the community wants to see there. As an example, there's a real interest in additional restaurants, which the area is rather underserved for restaurants right now. So it does look like there's demand there. It does look like the market is not serving that demand right now. So that is an opportunity. Public Services and Infrastructure is Chapter Four, very important chapter because here we looked at potential evacuation, we looked at existing evacuation routes and discussed potential evacuation routes with the community, with staff, with the fire district. We also looked at potential transit improvements. There is transit in this area. How to improve the route, how to improve the current, the headways on the route were both discussed. And then we looked at utility infrastructure for any new development that would be coming to make sure that it could be serviced by utilities. Public services like fire and police were looked at. And then there's goals and policies for public services and infrastructure. Chapter Five is Recreation and Trails, also quite important to the community because there's very little open public, open space and parks in the area. There's some private or kind of homeowner association-associated open space, but we looked at ways to get more public open space. There is a real desire to get some public gathering space for the overall community in Greater Higgins, places where community could gather, see, maybe even see music, or just hang out, have cafes or other kinds of opportunities to just meet their neighbors. There doesn't really seem to be a good opportunity for that currently in the area. We also made recommendations for a couple of sites for parks, and very importantly, having a multi-use path network. There's already some multi-use paths, mostly around the schools. How to expand that path network so that people don't have to drive necessarily, but could bicycle, walk, or jog in the area. So both for recreation and connectivity, we looked at ways to improve that multi-use path network. Chapter Six covers historic, cultural, natural, and scenic. There are scenic corridors here. Highway 49 and Combi Road are both scenic corridors in the county. The county, you know, there's no indigenous land acknowledgement because the original occupants of the land were the native tribes. And Ragsdale Creek is quite a natural resource for the area and needs to be protected and enhanced. And then, Chapter Seven is the implementation chapter, where we really looked at funding mechanisms, programs, activities. What can the county do to help implement the plan? What can the community do to help implement the plan? And I'm happy to hear that there's some conversation about continuing the MAC, because I think that is an important implementation action. And then the last chapter is really the appendix, where we have a set of design guidelines, which are meant to help shepherd and focus the design to make sure that it meets the community's vision for the area. And the character is in character with the Higgins Area and Nevada County. These guidelines are meant to be used in parallel with the Western Nevada County Design Guidelines, which is an existing document. So we kind of took that as a basis and enhanced for the Higgins Area to really focus on things the community said they were interested in. Some of them are listed on this list here. Public art is an example. Lighting and signage is another example. Making sure that the area is safe by using SEPTED principles of environmental design. And we have a whole section on multifamily residential development because there is likely to be some amount of multifamily residential development in the area. And I'm happy to answer more questions on any of those topics. Brian?
Thank you, Bruce. So that was an overview of the plan itself. I'm just going to go over quickly the components of the actions in order to potentially adopt the plan. As I mentioned, this is an area plan. That's a subset of the general plan. But the general plan itself does have some references to our area plans. So we're recommending change to the general plan to add some text amendments for internal consistency. Along with the expanded area of the plan, all of our parcels that are within plans have the site performance combining district or an overlay. So there is a rezone or a change to our zoning map to include those parcels for consistency, to reference that they are within the plan area. And then we have some text changes to the zoning ordinance, just to reference the Greater Higgins Area Plan in the correct year in which it is being adopted, because it currently references the 2000 area plan. Briefly, this plan is a project under CEQA, and county staff prepared a negative declaration that was circulated for public comment period from the end of November to the beginning of January. Some comments were received, but no substantial revisions were required to the document that would necessitate recirculation. And since this plan is a policy document and is not approving any entitlements or any land use or any development, it was found to not have an impact to the environment and did not require any mitigation or significant impacts. The plan and the components that I mentioned earlier, to make reference, or changes to the zoning ordinance and the general plan, is consistent and would be consistent if all the actions are taken today with our general plan and our zoning ordinance. And as Bruce mentioned, the planning commission did hear this item on January 12th earlier this year and recommended on a 4-0-1 absent vote to adopt a resolution that would approve the negative declaration, adopt a resolution for the plan itself, and approve two ordinances to make changes to the zoning ordinance and zoning map, as I mentioned earlier. And with that, that concludes our presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Bruce. So this is a public hearing. So before we get into general discussions, is there any specific questions the members of the board might have to start before the public hearing? No? No, okay. Artie, you okay?
I just have quick questions, but we can do it after, if you'd like, Chair Schofield.
Sure. Let's go ahead, and we'll open the public hearing portion of this. If you will, just come to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
My name is Tom Durkin. I live in Nevada County. I just have a question. How much of this housing is affordable?
So Brian, do you want to respond to that, please?
Any of the housing is likely to be, much of the multifamily housing is likely to be affordable. There's policy, Brian, why don't you take the affordable housing policy question on? It does accommodate, I can't say that the plan does accommodate affordable housing. There are some sites that are actually called out in the housing element as being sites, opportunity sites for affordable housing. So it's, I don't know if it's likely, but it's at least possible that the affordable housing developers will use those sites for affordable housing.
So, and it is a planning document. There's nothing, there's no entitlements being approved. There's no specific housing development or any other type of development. But as Bruce was saying, it does identify different densities of housing, R3, which would be the higher density, which could accommodate affordable housing projects. And we are currently looking at, as Bruce mentioned, a, two sites that were rezoned as part of our housing element for higher density off a Cameo Drive, and then one behind the Holiday Marketplace. So there's potential, but nothing being approved with today's action.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Hi, my name is Gary Baker. I've been a member of the South County Municipal Advisory Committee for about a year and a half, a little bit longer now that we've been having these meetings. And the, you know, it's been a challenging process in the beginning because of trying to do these things with Zoom meetings. But as that lightened up and we got to have in-face, in-person meetings, we got more and more community involvement in this planning process. The, but the thing that is, maybe needs some further clarification, and I see these articles in the newspaper even this week about this Higgins Area, is that, you know, we started with a land use that was established in the general plan. There's nothing that was done during this entire planning process which changed the existing land use. You know, the focus here is pretty much in how to implement that land use and to provide benefits to that community, both in infrastructure and aesthetics, and maybe priorities of what is important. And that's really the crux of our participation that we've been trying to gather. We don't know what type of particular units are going to be built and what, you know, financial range they're going to be in. That was not our charge. Those are land uses that are already established. So we worked within those land uses and came up with circulation patterns. And one of the things that I thought was, you know, clever and important is, you know, to minimize the use of the automobile by allowing these residents, especially Lake of the Pine residents, to commute to the Higgins Corner or the Holiday Market with their golf cart. And I think that's been a practical approach. So that multimodal method of transportation is something that's included in this plan, or certainly in the emergency access. And I think that it's the implementation of the plan and those sections of this document, which are critical. And now there are apparently different pools of funding that may be available through different sources, and which we can actually see the, this plan get implemented in a way that it was, you know, assembled. And that's different than a lot of planning documents that just get made and sit on the shelf. So we have an opportunity here to carry this further, with participation, of course, with our, you know, the county and the residents. But that would be an exciting thing, to actually see something on the ground. We can't hurry up development, but if having infrastructure in place to make it more attractive for development to come in, you know, that really seeds the way to help implement this, this plan. And I'm just urging that the board consider this document and adopt the Higgins Area Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. And if I can, I'm going to introduce, Gary is a member of the Municipal Advisory Council, as is our vice president, Jim Mathias. I think you met him earlier. Gloria Segal is a member. Jake Jacobson is a member. And I'd like to introduce the president of this group, Aaron Sullivan. And thank you for the job you've done. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you so much. Well, I've been introduced, but good afternoon, honorable members of the Nevada County Board of Supervisors. I am Aaron Sullivan, and I have had the pleasure of serving as the chair of the South County Area Municipal Advisory Council, which I will call the MAC. Area Municipal Advisory Council, which I will call the MAC from here on in, in order to not stumble over those words. And I am here to provide some comment to you on behalf of the South County MAC. The Board of Supervisors did adopt the resolution to create this MAC in February of 2021 for the purposes of reviewing and making recommendations regarding the development, passage, and implementation of the Higgins area plan to District Two Supervisor Ed Schofield, to the Planning Commission, and also to you, the Board of Supervisors, and to also serve, I think, very importantly, as a conduit to promote community involvement and to garner community input throughout the Higgins area planning process. The MAC consists of 11 members, all of whom volunteered as part of an open application process. We were interviewed by Supervisor Schofield and by county staff, and then we were invited to serve on the council. I am pleased to have this opportunity, if you will allow me, to recognize my fellow South County members for their hard work, for their due diligence throughout this process. These members, as Supervisor Schofield has mentioned, do include myself and also my co-chair, Jim Mathias, who did step in for me a couple of times. I'm so grateful for, for having lots of bodies available to do this work. Also, some folks who are not here today, but who are probably watching, William Chekvala, Tony Goncalves, Brian Hamilton, Vicki Hawkins, Mary Jane Hunigart, and of course, Jake Jacobson, Gloria Siegel, Gary Baker, who you just heard from, and also Dallin Packard, who was an alternate. Over the course of the last couple of years, as you've gotten some updates here, the MAC has held public meetings approximately once a month that have included county planning staff, Associate Planner Kyle Smith, and the county's consultants from Placework, Bruce Brubaker and Janet Chang. The MAC's also promoted and participated in four community input meetings, which you also heard about. And due to the COVID-19 pandemic, these meetings were held virtually via Zoom. We had good turnout and we received a lot of input from members of our South County community. And I just want to acknowledge the efforts of the MAC to identify public outreach opportunities throughout to order, to promote the public meetings and encourage participation. We developed a small ad hoc committee to brainstorm ways to get the word out. We passed out flyers outside a sporting event at Bear River High School. We hosted an information table outside the Holiday Market, and thanks to the Holiday Market for giving us that space. We put posters up at local businesses. We wrote advertisements for community newsletters and used our own social media to call our community's attention to this work. With all of this, there was yet a group of community members who contacted us early last fall, anxious to share their concerns and input. So, we held an in-person meeting with Placework staff and also with county staff to provide an additional opportunity for the public to provide their input on the plan and the implementation chapters. That meeting was attended by more than 40 people, and we were really pleased to see that output, or that turnout of the community. Since that meeting, a number of community members have continued to engage in the process, and I think we all feel really encouraged. It would have been nice to have them with us in person sooner, but it was so nice to have them at the end. The resolution to extend the MAC for another two years, I think, is an exciting opportunity as well to give some additional members of our community who are now engaged and really interested an opportunity to serve and kind of pick up where we've left off and see things through as maybe parts of this plan are considered for implementation. I would just, on behalf of the council, of the South County Area Municipal Advisory Council, just encourage you to adopt this plan today. We are very supportive of it. I think we're very proud of our work, and I, and I think the community in our area is as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you again for your leadership. Jake?
Am I really this short? Good afternoon, supervisors. My pleasure. It was my pleasure to be part of the South County MAC. It was my pleasure to work with my fellow MAC members. I learned so much about the community in which I was raised. I was absolutely dumbfounded. It was just a fun process. I'm here to support the adoption of the plan, but I'm also here to share a little bit about my interest in the plan coming in, that having been a child or child prodigy of many of the seniors in Lake of the Pines, I still deliver groceries in there to many of my mom's friends, I was asked to look over two projects, and one was a multi-use path, and I liked the way Gary said it, multimodal pathway to get from Lake of the Pines to the new shopping area to CVS where they get their prescriptions. And I'm so glad to see that that's in the plan. In addition to that was, was a component for senior housing because as you outgrow your three-bedroom, two-bath house, you want a place to transition to but stay in your same, in the same community. And that really didn't offer an opportunity before this discussion. So, I was really excited to see those components in the plan. What surprised me was the amount of commentary that came out about having a community space, a place where we can all come together. You know, Lake of the Pines has its clubhouse, and it has its parks, and it has its recreation areas. But if you don't live within those gates, you really don't get to connect as a community. You know, where do all those little kids get together? Well, on the Little League field, maybe. But we used to have things like the Higgins Diggins Flea Market. And believe it or not, it was a five-acre empty lot that turned into a community space twice a year that everybody came out for. I think that vision came out of this plan, and I hope to see that developed sometime in the future, which is why I'm glad to see the South County MAC continuing because I think that the people will get behind it to develop those spaces. I'm also a little bit of a grant writer, so I was really excited in the last couple of weeks because several grant opportunities came up. There is a component in the back of the plan that says funding opportunities, but, and I initially thought the Recreation Trails Grant would be an awesome opportunity, but it's really about non-motorized. If we put golf carts on this path, as we're talking about, we need something else. And so, there's some transportation grants out there. Under the Surface Transportation Block Grant, there's a Transportation Alternative Program that allows for funding. It would be great for this project. It would be wonderful for the Penn Valley Parkway or, or pathway that sits in front of Western Gateway Park. Just wanted to say, April 28th is the deadline. But be that as it may, I'm excited about the project. I'm excited that the components were added that I think will complement this community and that there are funding opportunities and people willing to step up to implement the plan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake. Any other public comment?
My name is Sue Rich, and I live on Bryan Lane, which is in the Higgins Heights development. Our concern is the Ragsdale Creek, and as we develop that Higgins area, I would hope that we would continue to be careful about the amount of water that's put there. We have a culvert that connects our street to Wolf Road, and the beavers live under that culvert, and we can't get anybody to answer the phone in Nevada County to take care of that problem for us. We're not allowed to do it, apparently. So, that's my concern. We've come before the Planning Commission before, and they did not concern themselves with our issue, and I hope that this will be taken into consideration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Any other comment? Madam Clerk, is there any?
Yes, there's no phone calls waiting for this topic. Sure.
All right. Seeing no other public comments, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the board. I do think it's kind of important, Brian, you mentioned, and I think Mr. Baker mentioned it too, that what this plan is, is basically policy. Any development or any project coming forward still has to go through the proper procedures, the planning procedures, et cetera, et cetera. So, I felt like we did not change a lot within the district or the plan. We did recognize evacuation routes, but again, those are potential, possible. And I do think that, Bruce, you focused on it too, that a lot that came out of it was that the community wanted to keep that rural atmosphere, and I think that's very much of what this plan says. So, I'll bring it back to you. And Sue, I'll start with you since you're familiar with the MACs.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, this is, well, one, I want to thank the community for being engaged and helping make those kinds of decisions about where you live because this is a long-range plan, right? And I've watched what it's doing in our community so far, and it's so helpful. I was pretty impressed. I even liked how you added in about the roundabouts and how traffic was going to move. I mean, the foresight you have to have to look at so that it's a little easier to get those projects funded because that's the other big part about this, the things that are in here help you to get funding or just like Sandy was talking about for grants. You know, when you have in a plan, you have something to work from, and so, those are all critical components of this. I watched how it worked when we developed Dollar General. I have the cutest Dollar General in the state of California. Okay, because of some of the things that were in our area plan in Penn Valley. So, I've watched, I looked through here and looked at some of the things that you guys have planned, and it's going to help you develop and stay rural, yet grow economically because that's, that's important too, right? And I liked the, I wish we didn't do with the wider paths. So, I like that part there. That was kind of interesting because, you know, we were looking at connecting Lake Wildwood, and that's kind of the same idea as you getting to that grocery store. So, and just other things, so like the sidewalks, there's room for change. You can use the more decomposed granite-type sidewalks in here versus having everything being concrete. So, you left this wide variety of opportunity to build and grow in here. And of course, Parks and Recreation is a big one for your community that you don't really have a big park there. So, it was kind of interesting to see how you depicted little places that you might put pockets and, because those are things we do look for. I'm excited with some of the plans that are coming with apartment buildings down there, or not apartments, but what we call that, higher-density housing that maybe happen in that area. And that kind of stuff needs to be in here because it needs to be, how do you want to plan it? What do you want it to look like? So, I just want to commend you all because, like I said, we, it's a long process, and you guys did it through Zoom, and I think that has to be entirely very difficult. And that you, your ability to sit down and really find ways, I learned something from you from ours about how you get people to show up. Because I don't care how much you advertise, usually you hear, well, I didn't know you were doing that. So, good on you on that part, too. I, I, let's see, what other part? There was, there were so many things, and I'm going to be honest, I didn't finish reading it. I didn't have enough days. So, I'm going to continue to pick through this, but what I saw for it, I liked the evacuation route section. I think that we have to really look at those as we look with fire protection and our fire-safe communities that we're working on. And that's something that we have to keep, keep really high on our priorities for all the places we live. And of course, I'm on the Recreation Committee, so the trails part really intrigued me in here too, as you're looking at that forward motion and how we, we manage. I like that word multimodal because I get that on my Transportation Commission, and that's something we do have to look at because things are changing, ever-changing, and we got to be able to do that 50 years out, right? So, that's all, but congratulations. I, I really support this. I feel like this gives your area a roadmap to development and yet stay in the way we want to continue to live in Nevada County. So, good job, Ed, and your whole county, your community.
Thank you, Sue. I think I'm going to go to Hardy.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. It was, it was good. I just had a couple of quick questions. I kind of echo, you know, the community sentiment. Doing a master plan and a, and a MAC is, is like big mental gymnastics. There's a lot of really high-level, critical thinking about the long-term planning horizons, and job well done engaging your community, Supervisor Schofield, and getting them out to, to play a role in that and be responsible, kind of, in the vision of the next, the next, the next portions of building for, for everybody. I just had a couple of quick questions. The report mentioned the rural, rural gateway, and I'm just wondering what other communities, what is, what does a gateway look like in other communities or what, what may be possible for us in the Higgins area when it comes to the gateway portion?
I'll, I'll take that. So, there was lots of discussion by the community, thinking that, that a gateway at Combi and 49 would be useful and attractive to kind of announce the area. And there wasn't really any kind of consensus about what it might look like. So, we didn't really hear that people were interested in like an arch over the street or anything like that, but maybe some nice signage, some nice landscaping, I think those, and public art. Those things were all considered, mentioned. I think this plan, like in so many topics, the plan is really kind of the start. It's like gaining momentum, and there's a lot more discussion to have with the community. It really should rise up from the community exactly what that gateway would be like. But there's, you know, there's different ways to handle this idea of rural, and it has to do with, if it is public art, there's a certain kind of public art that says that, that gives that message, you know, that is somewhat more modest and not, probably not so contemporary or modern. And signage could also be somewhat, you know, rustic or rural looking, so. But that's for really the community decide, to decide in the end.
Thank you. One of the other questions I had, and I, I'm glad to see the multimodal trail between Lake of the Pines and Higgins Corner, but that area is, it's really narrow at certain points. And I was wondering, is there a, like a, a near-term horizon or any plans or priority setting for making that road wider, safer, more pedestrian or bicycle-friendly? Was that accelerated in the plan anywhere or discussed as a priority?
I, I think it's an implementation priority, if you, if you want to talk about it, Brian, but it is challenging. Everywhere we work, there's a, there's an interest in getting more pedestrian and bicycle and, in this case, golf cart activity on our public streets. In places like Higgins, where you have a two or three or sometimes four-lane road, but no sidewalks, you know, for a lot of it, it's, it's difficult to find space. I do think there's space there. I think some of the challenges will be, while Ragsdale Creek on the south side of Combi is an issue and not likely to accommodate a wide trail on the south side. So, looking on the north side, there may need to be some engineering to make that work because there, you know, there is topography and it may need some retaining. But that's for the next step. You know, I think there should be a, well, my recommendation would be to, to look to Caltrans for a, for a grant or the other granting bodies to, to study it and do an engineering study about the best way to get an appropriate trail there. So, we've taken the first step in the plan, yeah.
Yeah, nice.
And if I can say, Hardy?
Yeah.
At least in my mind, the sidewalk is a priority on Combi, and I know Tricia has been pursuing grants on that, and I would hate to see the golf cart part of it slow up the sidewalk portion. To me, that portion is really the priority from the schools all the way down to the intersection there.
Yeah. I spent a lot of time riding my bike through that section, and there's a lot of traffic, a lot of people and a lot of, and not a lot of shoulder. I think the, the lane and the white line are kind of the end of the pavement and the white line are the same. And that sounds like a great possibility. Just one more quick question that when you talked about crime prevention through architectural design, I was wondering, was there specifics looking at Bear River High School and how its proximity to the road or entrance gates or fencing or, or anything related to school safety through that, that crime prevention architectural design element?
That's an interesting question. We did have a stakeholder meeting with the principal of Bear Valley High, and he did not mention that when we talked about safety, it was really safety of getting students to school. So, having, you know, as Supervisor Schofield said, having additional ways for students to bicycle and walk. Also, traffic at that intersection can be an issue. So, so those were some of the conversations we had there. Regarding crime prevention, we didn't really hear that from the principal, but it is something that schools unfortunately need to be thinking about these days. So, I think it's a point well-taken. We put general policy in the plan about crime prevention through environmental design, and some of those principles would probably help in a school setting as well. and some of those principles would probably help in a school setting as well, but we didn't really talk about it specifically for schools. So I appreciate that comment, yeah.
Yeah, great, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Hardy. Heidi?
Thank you. Yeah, this is very exciting. This is sort of a planner's dream, to get to come in right up front and lay down some principles and plots and ideas and not have to come in afterwards and adjust, right? So this is exciting, and I can see that this is more like a plan of a plan. So it's lazing out the concepts, but each of these elements would have to be developed into a real plan. So it's just the beginning, I can see that. And I think, so I really like your chapters on implementation and priorities. I think that's really important. It addressed one of my sort of questions, which was if you're planning to bring in more housing and families, which is great, are you planning for that with recreation facilities and parks? Because we don't want to overwhelm other parts of the county, right? So it looks like the, you know, you have your priorities set, so that's all will, would happen kind of in order if you could direct the world to do things the way you want in this plan. And I know that's going to be up to what grants might be available and what developers might be interested and so on. So the couple of things I would just comment on also is, you know, the infrastructure piece has always been a problem, right? You can't, without developer, without the infrastructure, it's hard to bring in developers. Developers come in there, you know, it's just that mix of what comes in first and how do you fund it? And so just want to make sure that, you know, that's, that there's a realistic plan for that infrastructure coming in to make it possible. And then that kind of comes to my, like my number, the biggest sort of curiosity, which is sort of planning for the future, you have this chance to plan for resiliency. So I see that you have a section on drought-resistant plants, which is great. So you're planning for the kinds of weathers that we might have, and there should be opportunities for preparing for fiber-ready, right? That every building should be fiber-ready maybe, or that, you know, solar, you've got a plan for bringing in solar panels in a way that's affordable and consistent. Or energy, so sort of how to provide energy savings so that you encourage developers who are coming in to make energy-efficient housing and building. I mean, this is all sort of dream stuff, right? Not, I don't know, you don't want to regulate it, but you want to encourage it or make it easy for that to happen. It just seems like a really great opportunity to maybe upfront have some environmental or resiliency principles as you move forward to incorporate all that. I mean, what a great thing if you end up with housing and buildings that are much more resilient for the weather that we're having now and that we're going to continue to have probably, and for the costs of gas or electricity going up. So I just, I mean, I can't help but think big on this, because you do have this opportunity, right, right up front as you're, as you're putting this plan forward. But it looks like a wonderful process, and it's a great product that you have, and I think it's very exciting, be exciting to move forward.
Thank you, Heidi. I don't know, did you make, want to make any comments on that, the resilience part?
You jump in anytime, Bruce. I mean, there was a lot in your statements, Supervisor Hall, that some of the things that came to mind were with the infrastructure, working on grants and trying to get the infrastructure to go out to those two higher-density zone properties that the counties pursued over the last couple of years for the Cameo Drive. Potential development as well as extending sewer down Higgins and participating in that process with Holiday Market in order to plan the infrastructure support for additional housing. Some of the, you know, walkability and increasing different types of transportation options kind of goes toward the, you know, saving energy type part, but I think you make very good points about the solar and the fiber. We do have the dig-once policy that was recently adopted, but that's not necessarily inside the homes, but it's inside the infrastructure. So just a couple of comments where we tried to hit those areas, but I think, you know, next time and as we further develop this plan, incorporating some of those other things that you mentioned is a great idea.
And I would just say, yeah, they're all great points. I would just add that I was impressed in conversations with the sanitary district that there is planning done. I mean, this feeds from the general plan, so the general plan kind of, you know, sets the table for, including on infrastructure, and there is planning done to accommodate future development for the most part. I think probably the challenge will be connecting the wastewater in particular. But, so I was impressed with that. Regarding some of the great points you made about solar, you know, getting resiliency as integrated into the plan, I would just say that we tried to do some. It could probably be more, but some of these issues, I think, also are maybe best addressed at the county level as well. So in terms of overall policy regarding solar, for example, or even fiber, it's harder to do some of these things at a area plan level. And so I would just say that, you know, many, many communities, you know, really try to look at that through a climate action plan or some other kind of green plan at the county level. And I liked your point about matching recreation facilities to future development, because that was a conversation that came up. And, you know, one thing about the schools is that there's school capacity there, and so there is an interest, and there's an interest on many in the community to get families to live in Higgins. And so that's one of the reasons why multifamily housing, it could be good starter homes for families to move in to the area and help, you know, you know, vitalize the schools, vitalize the area, but then there will need to be recreational facilities for the community in a way that there isn't yet. So it does need to be coordinated, and I appreciate that point.
If I could just follow up. Thanks, yeah, and I appreciate your comment about some of this needs to be done at the county level. It's like the chicken and the egg, which comes first. But I do know, like, for instance, swales, that, you know, the development of an area for swale in parking lot or the sides of parking lot or in public areas, it's one of the things I had, my agency that I'd worked for a while ago had worked on. It's been around for a long time, but just incorporating swales for the runoff that you handle runoff better, it clarifies the water, it's good for groundwater, it re-inhites. So I think there, that's just one example, but there are grants out there now, too. There are pilot projects that you could get, some of it, a lot of it probably through some of the climate change funding that's coming down to implement some of these projects as pilot projects or, and you know, again, Ed, I don't know, your community would have to identify that that's what they want, but it's just such a great opportunity to look at some of these kind of resiliency things that you could do. Thanks again.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Brian. Heidi, I mean, Lisa?
Thank you. Just a couple of really brief comments. One, I'm really impressed with the process that was used here and the fact that it was not driven just by government, but it was driven by the community members and the stakeholders that live out there. And thank you all for your service. I know it's a lot of nighttime meetings and lots of work that goes into it. And I also really like the fact that you're trying to create a sense of place, you know? I live in town, I have my sense of place, but when you live more rural, it's harder to establish that. And many years ago, I actually lived in Lake of the Pines ranches, and we had a really tight-knit neighborhood, and I've actually kept in touch with some of my neighbors out there. And I think that this type of plan helps facilitate close-knit neighbors, and, you know, we really saw with the storm how much we all really need each other. So, and I know that, like, the pines and the ranches and dark horse aren't part of it, but the fact that you did use them as areas of influence, which is really important for any commercial development that you might try to do out there. I know when I lived out there, I was at the Holiday Market at least three days a week. So it's really important to have those kinds of facilities to serve people so they don't have to drive all the way into Grass Valley or all the way down to Auburn to get just those basic needs met. So, good job, very impressive with the work that's been done. I look forward to the next two years of watching the whole plan grow.
So this is really interesting, and I was listening to what everyone says, but the other part of this is you don't want to be so specific that you tie yourself in, into a situation where you can't move from it either. So that's part of it. And with Everlanding, changes in land use and things that come from the state, that was one reason that you don't, sometimes we looked at ours, at not getting too specific. When you get so tied into it, or maybe is there ways to mitigate that? You might get to a place like you're talking with the creek where you just can't do the path, but you don't want to stop any development that might change. You have to have a little bit of room to play with this wonderful plan that you have. And so that's why, I just am saying, you just want to get too specific. I think, and then what planning and building demands already from the state is probably going to tie into this, and again, I love what we're doing with the climate resiliency through the county, but you don't want to make it more demanding by your area plan than what we already, that we already require. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So that's part of the reason sometimes it seems a little open-ended on one end, possibly. I mean, that's my thought, anyway.
Both great points. Thank you.
Well, you know, with the resilience, and you brought it up, Mr. Hall, that's maybe better done at the county level. And you think, well, what the heck is this? This is the county level. But I recall the conversation of our MAC going, maybe plan is not the right term. You guys remember that? It's like, this really isn't a plan as much as a, I forget some of the terms, but it's more of a vision. So, yeah, a concept, more of a vision. And again, everything that would fit into that area plan still needs to come back through the regular process at the county, so that was an excellent point. And again, I want to thank Bruce for your time and your company's expertise there, and Brian, and Kyle, wherever Kyle is, he was a key part of it. And my MAC members, thank you so much, and we're continuing. And Jeffrey and Sarah and Barbara, thank you again. So I think we can start doing some motions here. That concludes the public hearing portion of this. And the next item would be the resolution adopting a negative declaration in connection with the adoption of the Greater Higgins Area Plan. Entertained a motion?
So moved. District four.
Motion. Supervisor Hook?
I'll second.
Seconded. Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
District five, yes.
And District two.
District two, yes. Thank you. Next is a resolution amending the Nevada County General Plan, Chapter One, Land Use Elements Supporting Planning Documents, Planning for Legacy Communities, Policy 1.3, 1.313, and adopting the general, the Greater Higgins Area Plan. Motion?
So moved. District four. Oh, there. I'll let Hardy do that.
Motion Supervisor Bullock, second. Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk?
District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
District five, yes.
And District two.
District two, yes. Thank you. The next is an ordinance amending Section L-2, 1.3D, Article One, Chapter Two, the Land Use Development Code of the County of Nevada, to amend zoning District Maps Number 46, 46A, 47, 47A, and 58 to add the site performance combining District with parenethetical reference to the adopting ordinance to two parcels added to the area plan boundaries. And that's just recognizing the new boundaries that were created through this plan, correct? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall?
Second.
Second. Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
District five, yes.
And District two.
District two, yes. And finally, to introduce and waive further reading and adopt an ordinance amending Section L-2, 4.2, .3, .2, Article Four, Chapter Two, of the Land Use and Development Code of the County of Nevada, to update the reference to the Greater Higgins Area Plan.
So.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout. Second Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk?
District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
District five, yes.
And District two.
District two, yes. And with that, seeing no more business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, thank you.